Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon, everybody. And please, please continue to eat. I have three teenagers. I have learned to speak over any type of noise and din. So, good afternoon. And I don't live in DC, but I will say welcome to Washington DC, to all of my friends who I have known for so many years. So happy to be with you. And all of my new friends that I am meeting and hope to meet even more of you. Not too long ago, I had the opportunity to sit down with David Brand to hear about the mission and incredible work of Leonard Kaplan and the Alliance for Global Good. It should have been no surprise that when David proposed this conference to me and my husband, we both responded immediately and absolutely enthusiastically. To bring together public and private worlds to explore so many of the guiding principles that we believe so deeply in was an opportunity we would never pass up. Philanthropy and its contribution to helping global need have support across the entire political spectrum. And pairing this most critical activity with innovation makes absolute sense always, but it is timely given the current state of the world's challenges. So when the Alliance, with its admirable focus on collaboration and leverage, asked us to be involved, we did not hesitate and are thrilled to be able to participate with all of you today. Of course, I have the best job of the day and the honor of introducing our next speaker. It is hard to sum up the accomplishments of Ambassador Swannie Hunt. A trailblazer for so many causes and an expert on domestic policy and foreign affairs, Swannie Hunt is the president of Hunt Alternatives Fund, a private foundation that works to support leaders of social movements, combat the demand for purchased sex, achieve political parity for women in high-level positions, not only in the US but globally, strengthen youth arts organizations, and of course, increase philanthropy. She also chairs the Washington-based Institute for Inclusive Security, including the Women Waging Peace Network, which conducts research, training, and advocacy to integrate women into peace processes. At Harvard's Kennedy School of Governance, Swannie is the Eleanor Roosevelt Lecturer in Public Policy, the founder of the Women in Public Policy Program, core faculty at the Center for Public Leadership, and senior advisor to the Working Group on Modern Day Slavery at the Car Center for Human Rights. She began her seminal work in this area when, as the US Ambassador to Austria from 1993 to 1997, she hosted negotiations and international symposia focused on stabilizing the neighboring Balkan states and encouraging women leaders throughout Eastern Europe. Although she was raised in Dallas, Swannie made her mark as a civic leader and philanthropist in her adopted city of Denver, where for two decades she led community efforts on issues such as public education, affordable housing, homelessness, women's empowerment, and mental health services. She is also a member of the Council on Foreign Relations and has authored numerous articles and books, including her memoir and a third book just released this fall. In 2007, Swannie was inducted into the National Women's Hall of Fame. She has had more than a dozen one-woman shows of her photographs in five countries, and her musical composition has had performances in six cities. She holds two master's degrees, a doctorate in theology, and three honorary degrees. Swannie was married for 25 years to the late Charles Anspacher, international conductor and founder of the Boston Landmarks Orchestra. And her world today includes their three children, along with a menagerie of cat, parrot, horses, bison, and grandchildren. It is so clear to see that Swannie Hunt is the embodiment of what the Alliance for Global Good stands and exists for. Her life's work and dedication of resources to programs and efforts that will provide the greatest impact in solving global problems and finding solutions is unmeasured and undeniable. I can't believe how fortunate I am to be here with her today and invite you to join me in welcoming Ambassador Swannie Hunt. What fun. What fun. Is my mic on? Good, okay. Leonard, Toby. Good work. This is excellent, what you have done. And I know a few of the organizers who've been your hands and feet, and I want to congratulate everyone who's a part. Could we, please, once again? I was asked if I would say a few words about the idea of innovations in philanthropy and impact. And Diana was saying, yes, talk about women, too. And I'm very happy to be standing up here to be able to do that. So if I could, I want to say, let's see. I love telling stories, okay? I actually know a lot about research and facts and figures. But I also know that stories are lodged in a place in your brain where you actually remember much longer. So I hope you'll allow me to do that occasionally. As I do that, I'm aware of philanthropists who are here in the room and actually, everyone who's in here in the room is a philanthropist, I suppose. And so we all face the question of how much to give. And when my sister Helen, who's one year older than I am, when she and I were 30 and 31, I was 30, we decided that being Hunts from Dallas, that we should make a decision about this and not simply have philanthropy as an internal, you know, here's how much I give to church every Sunday, whatever, but really start taking it more seriously. And so we decided that we would give away half of our income every year. And, you know, we didn't come up with that figure for any noble reason. We did it because of the tax structure, right? So I don't want to sound like I'm some angel here. But anyway, we did it. And so the first year, and we would create a foundation, call it Hunt Alternatives Fund. We struggled about the name. We tried on every name. The Mustard Seed Fund, but then someone told us that people didn't read their Bible, so we couldn't do that. And then we tried. We gathered some friends and gave them two mini margaritas. And they came up with the name Hunts Catch Up, which I thought was cute, but we didn't stick with it. Anyway, so Helen and I started giving away money. And it was $1,000 here, and it was $3,000 there. And we did niche funding. It was often organizations that didn't yet exist. So we'd help them get their phone and their filing cabinet. And the first year of giving away half my income, I gave away $35,000. Which is to say, we were not what you would call wealthy, but still, we had this very strong sense that coming from the Hunt family, you know, this is what we should be doing. And I guess, I don't know if you all know about the Hunt family, but they're a big deal in Dallas. My father was actually H.L. Hunt. That really surprises people. He was 61 when I was born. So he's the patriarch of the family. He had no education and no formal education at all and was a card shark. That's another speech. Oh, good. Now you're entranced. Buy my book. Okay. So then some people come to me, some women. They say, we want to start a women's foundation for Colorado. Fern Portnoy was part of that. Let's get it together and figure out how we bring in money from wealthy women, you know, right, left, middle. We'll lose the far-left, we'll lose the far-right. That's okay. We'll work on women's empowerment and economic self-sufficiency. And we talked about the bylaws, and we talked about the mission statement. Nobody would talk about the money, you know, because we were scared. We were scared. And we, hi, are there any people behind the pillar completely? Okay. Why don't you just move your chairs? Because if I can't see you, you can't see me. But as you wish, as you wish. Anyone is welcome to move your chairs. Okay, so it was just so funny. We women were sitting, you remember, we were sitting around this table. So get this. So then one of us says, we have to deal with the money. If we don't have money, we're not going to tell people that we have a foundation. We said, okay. So I said, okay. How about we each write down on a piece of paper how much money we'll give, and then fold it, and you don't have to sign it? That's how scared we were of the whole idea of women and money. You guys don't understand. It is so hard for women to really claim that space. So one of the women turns to me. Her name was Josie Heath. And she says, look, Swannie, rightly or wrongly, you're perceived as being very flush. So why don't you do the lead gift? I think you really have to do this. The lead gift, and that'll be $250,000. I almost fell off my chair. Like, what is she talking about? What is she talking? We give $1,000 here, we give $3,000 there. What is she talking about? Like, where did she get that? I know where she got it. Forbes magazine. That Forbes magazine. What if Forbes is right? What if Helen and I, as 50% owners of the stock, actually could be living on more than $70,000 in a year of this company that was a really big company? Huh. And that was the moment for me. It was painful, it was uncomfortable. It led to going back to Dallas and the three sisters having some serious conversations with the brother who was running the company. And we came up with a different formula. But it was that moment. I think everyone in this room can think of those moments in your life. So now, fast forward to another moment. So I'm working on my will. And my investments have done better than Helen's. And so I say, okay, in my will, now I have millions and millions of dollars. In my will, I'm going to leave $5 million in a lump, and it'll go to any philanthropy that Helen wants it to go to for a project, but she has to run it. She can't just give it away. She's got to run it. Okay, because Helen was in the Women's Hall of Fame before I was. She started the Dallas Women's Foundation, the New York Women's Foundation, the National Network of Women's Funds. She was the godmother of that, blah, 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 blah. Okay, so she's like this real star. And so then I think, what if I don't die? You know, I mean, like, how much fun is that going to be? Like, I mean, seriously, seriously. What if Helen dies first? You know, I mean, or what if, like, I'm 90 years old and she's 91, and we're getting in our wheelchairs and getting, you know? And like, this isn't going to work. So I decide, I'm going to do it now. I can do it now. If I could do it when I die, I can do it now, right? I can just, I can take it out of my portfolio and tell her I want to put it into a project. Like, what is this about waiting till I die? Right? Right. Bonnie agrees. Okay, so I get together with Helen. And I say, Helen, I've decided. And I start crying. And so therefore, she starts crying. And I used to tell her, I love you so much, and I respect so much what you're doing, and I want to do this $5 million. And she says, oh, I can't believe the respect you have for me and the trust you have in me and the love you have for me. We cry a lot. And she said, $5 million? Just think what that could be for women's philanthropy. But you know, $10 million has more of a ring. That is my sister Helen. Truly, I promise, there is no exaggeration in that story. Although my mother did say, if it's not worth exaggerating, it's not worth telling. But seriously, that is what Helen said. And that is great fundraising, by the way. That is the best. So we negotiated, and I did six and she did four. And we said, what if we could get it matched? And we could create something that would encourage other women to do this? Because women have nickel-and-dimed, interestingly enough, their giving. You wouldn't think so, because you hear about one example and another. But what happens, men will give, they'll give $200,000 to the alma mater, and there'll be a big gym built or whatever. Women give $20,000 to Wellesley, and that's one of the biggest gifts that the college will receive. I mean, it's really, really interesting. Or they'll give big gifts for something that'll be in their husband's name. So it's pretty strange. So we thought, we've got to break out of this. We've got to help women come forward. And so let's get our $10 million matched, and we'll do something big. And then Helen said, I don't think it's matched. I don't think it's matched. Why don't we increase it to, like, from $10 million to $150 million? I said, okay, you do it. And she did it. She did it. It's called Women Moving Millions. She created essentially a group of women. And to be in the group, you had to pledge that you would give at least $1 million to projects that would help women and girls. And they're meeting today. The reason I'm not with you all day is that they are meeting down the street at the State Department today, the Department of Labor, et cetera. And it's a group of 100 women who have pledged $200 million. And it's just growing. I mean, you know, it is snowballing. And so that's my great story about philanthropy. If you build it and you have the charisma and the idea, and you get it going, there is no stopping it. There is so much money in this country that is, you know, that people don't know what to do with. The transfer of wealth to the next generation is estimated to be in the tens of trillions. And I will tell you that there just aren't enough people with the vision of the Kaplan family to really know how to use that well. And so I think we each have a responsibility to be not ever, ever apologizing when we ask other people to give, because what we're really doing is inviting them into a space that we know has given us so much meaning and so much joy. And like, why keep that a secret? So I'll have my hat at the back as you go through the door. Okay, so that's what I wanted to say about the philanthropy part. Terms of innovation, and then what did we do with it? In my situation, Helen and I divided our foundations at some point. And I was able to build up an endowment. And then I decided, you know, I hit my 60s, and I thought, you know, I'm starting to make phone calls to really close contacts in the State Department or whatever. And they've left. They retired. And I think, aw, jeez Louise. So now I've got to meet the new person, and I'm going to have an 18-month relationship with that person instead of an 18-year relationship with that person. And that's only going to keep going in terms of friends of mine who are dying or, you know, whatever. So I think, okay. I strategically have decided then to spend out the entire corpus of our foundation and to go full bore into causes that I care about. And by the way, the causes I care about are usually impossible. And the great thing about our foundation is that there's no dead donor, right? So I'm here, and which means if I say, let's take the risk, let's just go for it, somebody's got to do it. Let's us do it. Not because we want the place, but because it's got to get done. Then that's how we decide on issues. So we're very often into new territory. So we have this project, for example, called Political Parity, where we're doubling the number of women in the US Congress and in the governorships. We have Christian Coalition teamed up with Emily's List and Emerge, et cetera. We've got a leadership team of 50. We're putting the research behind it to figure out why women run, why they don't run for those highest levels. They'll run for state legislature, but they won't run for the US Congress. And we're going to figure that out. And fasten your seat belts, guys. The women are coming. And the reason we're doing it is not just because we believe in women's rights, it's because the International Parliamentary Union, which studies parliaments over the world, says the higher percentage of women you have, the more funding goes into education and into healthcare and in environment. That's interesting. And in fact, in the US Congress, a recent study said that women in the Republican Party voted, I don't want to say better, yeah, better, voted better on environmental issues than the guys did. And similarly, in the Democratic Party. So if you're really caring about the environment, then support the election of women. Now, that's the political parity. But that's actually not the one I wanted to focus on in my last part of my words to you. I would like to go back to those years in Austria. And the US-Austrian relationship was fine. I mean, we had a little bit still on Voltaire, Kurt Voltaire, but basically, it was fine. And I was used to working on intractable problems, and there was not an intractable problem there. And so I had to think hard. We had 500 employees at the embassy. They actually, it was a platform. They worked in 21 countries. We had 14 departments of the US government. But we also had 70,000 refugees who had streamed across the borders from the former Yugoslavia. And they had stories that were beyond, beyond. And you finished with your lunch, so I, I mean, the stories were, I don't think I'll go into them. Just imagine 50 years earlier, you know? And they were stories that, they were sadistic. They weren't war-as-hell. They were, this is sadism. And I would lie in bed and try to understand and think about, is there, maybe there is such a thing as evil. I mean, it seemed to be what we were looking at. So like, I'm sleeping on these very soft sheets in this very fancy dining room. And meanwhile, there are concentration camps, there are rape camps. There, I don't want to go into the details. Go back and read. But I had, that's where I had to get involved. I really didn't have any choice. People like to say to me, oh, it's so wonderful that you're doing this, because you could be sitting by a swimming pool, eating bonbons. And I think, oh, jeez. You know, I mean, definition of hell. But to feel like you're leaning into the situation that needs you, that's what meant the most to me. So I did get very involved. For a year and a half, it was so dangerous in Sarajevo with all the snipers. You know, Sarajevo that hosted the Olympics. Now, 10 years later, there are thousands and thousands and thousands, there's snipers in the hills, they're shelling. I mean, it's just unbelievable. Mikiyatshevich, whom some of you are meeting here, was a Bosnian refugee during that time. But I was going in. My husband, Charles, became the principal guest conductor of the Sarajevo Philharmonic. God bless him. Put together an orchestra that was literally decimated. Seven of the 70 had been killed by snipers on their way trying to get to a rehearsal. That's how desperate the situation was. And I was asked to come in. The American ambassadors to Bosnia, they weren't even in Sarajevo because it was so dangerous. And so we had them in our embassy in Vienna. Very, very unusual to do that. So the American Embassy for Bosnia was inside the American Embassy for Austria. So they asked me if I would come in. They were so short-staffed because the war was being run here in Washington. I wrote a book about this called Worlds Apart, about the gulf between the policymaking world and what was happening on the ground, because I was in both places. So they asked me if I'll come in. And I made probably at least 30 trips into Bosnia with my video camera, listening to the stories, the stories, the stories. And I was known as someone who cared. And it was easier for me to go in and work on the ground because I was not the US Ambassador to Bosnia. I was going in essentially as a private citizen. All right. So then there's a village called Strebenica, 12,000 people. And it's out, you know, in the farmlands. And it's an area that is basically people who are Muslim in faith, known as the Bosniaks. And the Serbs, the paramilitaries and the Serb Army start squeezing and squeezing and squeezing them in because they want them to flee. And they say, just go back to Turkey, where they've never lived for hundreds of years. And there's this play. And people, the play is to create Greater Serbia or to divide the country, and half of it goes to Croatia, half of it goes to Serbia. I mean, it was, it was a genocide. There was no question that it was a genocide. The US would not use the word genocide because that would force intervention. So we would talk about atrocities or whatever, whatever we would need to, so we wouldn't have to intervene. All right, so there's this village, and people start fleeing in from the countryside into the village until it's 40,000 people, not 12,000, 40,000. It doesn't have running water, it doesn't have electricity. It's bingshell, there are snipers. And eventually, even though the US had promised closer support, which is to say, to protect this enclave, we didn't deliver. Samantha Power, the problem from hell. Samantha Power was a stringer for the Boston Globe and the Washington Post. She cabled, she called back and said, there's a massacre that's about to happen. And they said, has it happened? And she said, no, but it's about to happen. The tanks are all assembled. And they said, well, write something when it happens. And that's how awful it is when you're up close. The massacre happens. 40,000 people, about 9,000 boys and men separated and executed in about 48 hours. So the women have been trucked away. They're told the men and boys will arrive. You know, on foot, there weren't enough trucks, they're told. And of course, they wait, and they wait, and they wait. And they finally start learning the truth. So these women are now living in burned-out houses. They are desperate. The UN is doing nothing because the UN is so ashamed of what has happened. And they put, we put on a commemoration. And 6,000 women in an indoor hall. As they're planning it, they're about to go out, and the US Army people say, well, we can't provide you any security unless it's even-handed, unless you have Serbs there also, Serb mothers. So I go to these mothers who are Muslim. And I say, look, I know this is hard to ask, but would it be okay with you if we invite some of the Serb mothers to come be part of this? And this is a woman who had just told me, I have a husband and two brothers and three boys. And they're all gone except my middle boy, and he was the fastest in his class. And I know that he could outrun whoever was trying to capture him because he was really the fastest in, not just in his class, but in his whole school. And I think that he's in the woods, and I think he doesn't know that the fighting has stopped, and that I think he's going to come out. She's hysterical. And I say, you know, could we have the Serb mothers come? And then I think, you know, I actually know something about psychology and trauma, and that was wrong, wrong, wrong. You don't re-traumatize someone with a question like that. And she looked at me, and she said, Madam Ambassador, we're all mothers. It's another turning point for me. And that's when I realized that when I had hosted those negotiations, 14 days' worth of negotiations, and we came back here to the White House, and there was the big signing with Presidents Czobekowicz, Tuchman, and Clinton, and I looked out and saw nothing but gray suits, and I was shocked by that. Because I, as the host, spending 14 days with these people, I had not realized that there was not one woman in those negotiations. And sure enough, the peace agreement that was struck established entrenched hardliners who will never be able to create a functional government. So I came back and I asked Joe Nye at the Kennedy School, I told him this story, because I was asked then to come to Harvard to teach. And he said, follow that question. Follow that question. And I went to the UN and I said, how come there aren't any women on the negotiating teams in Africa, all these wars? And the UN official said to me, because the warlords won't have them. And I said, yeah, but why? And he said, because they're afraid the women might compromise. Well, that's interesting. Like bingo. Like, what if you could, in fact, get warring sides in Afghanistan to compromise? How about one week earlier than otherwise? Do you know how many water wells you could build around the world with that one week of funding? War is extraordinarily expensive. If you could get women who would work across the aisles, which they do, I'm not talking about all women, I'm not talking about all men, about all women, not talking about all men, but women are notorious for being able to work across the aisles, to bring a different perspective, to create, to create peace plans that hold. Did you know that half the peace agreements in this, in the world fail? Half. You know why? Because the people you bring around the table, they all put their guns under the table and you say, okay, you can have the oil, you can have the diamonds, I'm going to keep the timber and you can have the rubber. And that's the peace agreement. That's not a peace agreement. And that's what Ellen Johnson-Surle realized when she became president of Liberia, is you have to bring the stakeholders around the table. So anyway, we established this spectacular institute, if I may say, here, the Institute for Inclusive Security with 20 people on the team who work in 40 conflicts. And we look at South Africa, the bloodbath that didn't happen, where the women fanned out across the country to figure out, to talk to people in the villages about what needs to be in the new constitution. We looked at Colombia, where the woman who was the defense minister said, I'm going to get 4,000 children out of these jungles. And she created the plan for housing and education for the paramilitaries, for the children, and 46,000 came out because the adults wanted it too. And then the guerrillas started coming out. And we looked at Afghanistan, where it was an illiterate grandmother who took her cellphone and because the Canadian military had established a relationship with her, the Canadians, she called and told them, there's something wrong at the jail. That was the jailbreak where 500 Taliban escaped. They got that call from her 10 minutes before any other indication. Because the Canadians had said, let's, let's find the women who are there locally, let's establish these relationships. I could give you 120 stories. I will urge you to find out much, much more, follow these spectacular heroic women. We have a website called Inclusive Security, but look particularly at Ellen Johnson-Surle for that scene that I didn't have teed up for you. Sorry about that. It shows her at this, at this meeting, the, the noise starts, it's the, it's the militia. She goes out, she pushes her security aside and she said, who de leader? Who de leader? And somebody walks up and she said, you come here, I meet with you. So she's using this pigeon English. It's really, really interesting. And so the next scene is up at the cabinet table and this guy is going on, we want our Christmas, we want our Christmas. And she's listening for that, you know, they want the extra payment. And she's listening, you know, we should have respect. And she's listening. Yes, you deserve respect. And then she goes at it. And what I tell those people in the village, what I tell them? You burned their houses, you raped their daughters, you destroyed their living. What I tell them? You tell me what I tell them. And this guy, he says, yeah, Ma. It's really a great, great moment where she has come in with this maternal, this Ma Ellen, and it worked. And she quells this rioting. Well, those are a few examples. I'm going to wrap up because I know you have so much going this afternoon. But what I hope you're hearing from this is that there are so many areas in which your partnerships, whether you work within the US government or in the private sector or as philanthropists or with NGOs, there are so many ways that you can be bold, then you can cut across lines that, just ignore those, just ignore those lines, be the people outside the box, redefine the box and take on the impossible. You know, why don't we just stop war? War is really a bad thing. Let's just stop it. And how, then how do we do it? Well, what about the, the 51% that's the untapped resource? How do we engage them? So think big. And I'll close by telling you about one of the great women of Rwanda, who unfortunately died, her name was Justine. You know that Rwanda is the only country in the world that has broken 50% in the parliament with women's participation? They have 56%. The next country is Sweden with 47. Nine-point difference. You know that the US is 85th in the world. At any rate, Justine died and we were very, very sorry to lose her, but very sorry. But upon her death, she was in a long line at the pearly gates and St. Peter said to her, you know, a life like yours is exemplary. And the way we reward people here in heaven is that you may have an interview with anyone you want, anyone you want. And she just immediately, it's the Virgin Mary. Now, you know, of course, that the Catholic Church is very important in Rwanda. And so this was, this was like a heartfelt need from her. And the, and Peter said, ugh, you know, it's quite a line, but we'll, we'll make it happen. So the moment came and she's standing there with the Blessed Mother and she said, I will keep this very short. I've had the opportunity, I've been brought to Washington through this program called Inclusive Security for Training. I've been in Boston, I've been other places in the world, in Brussels. I go into cathedrals and I see these bar relief or I see these statues or I see these paintings of you. And here you are, you're holding, you're holding the Savior of the world. And I see on your face a kind of, hmm, it's not a sadness, disappointment, no, it's just, there's just this wistfulness, you know, like, why aren't you beaming with joy? Have you ever noticed that? I mean, it's true. And there's no beam there. And, and Mary said, you know, no one's ever asked me that question before. And Justine said, your secret is safe with me? And Mary said, okay. Can't be repeated. Justine said, it's safe. And Mary said, we were really hoping for a girl. Thank you all.